Engineering Board, right. And I don't believe he was with LJA. I'm not, I'm not sure.
And on this one through eight, what it appears is you're noting that there are a lot of shortcomings in the city's ordinances or things weren't covered. Again, we're doing things we've never done before, so what you all are pointing out to us, but I guess I want to make sure council understands, all the folks that are dealing with what's going on here, they're following current, potentially outdated city ordinances or things that aren't specific enough, where you suggest this, the ordinance may not suggest the same size, it may suggest eight and it may suggest...
That's not what he's saying.
Well, no, no, I didn't, don't interrupt me. What I'm saying is, am I, am I correct with your requirements? You've mentioned things that they may not be needed, but the city ordinance doesn't specifically say they have to do this, that they didn't follow. These are things you're pointing out that based on our ordinances, we may have some shortcomings.
Right. There's, there's a lot of items in your ordinances that are not spelled out like they are in other communities. Your comment.
That's, thank you, that's all I wanted council to be aware of, that again, we're just trying to make it better, but we have to understand where we are in order to improve it.
I, I agree. He, he specifically talked about city ordinances in number three. Numbers one, two, four, five, six, seven, eight has nothing to do with an ordinance. And that was my thing. And so if Mr. Underwood could talk about those things, it has nothing to do with ordinance, more of, we're trying to figure out at what point is the corrective action or who would have flagged it? If LJA Engineering was the engineer for the city, why did they not flag it? And what is the process to make sure that we take care of that? So again, the ordinance issue only was with number three. Number one, number two, number four, number five, number six, number seven, and number eight had nothing to do with an ordinance.
Okay, so when it says on number eight, when observed did not appear to have any off-site erosion transport issues, that's something I take to be a non-issue because you didn't see a problem with whatever was going on there engineering-wise? Okay, now, we can't definitively say, or if you can, tell me, because you said LJA did some red markings. So we don't know if some of this was or wasn't caught up by LJA, or do we?
In our review, all of these things were potential issues.
We, we had one set of drawings that initially we thought were the final drawings, and they were small drawings. Then we got the large set. Well, the large set we got from the city was one that had been marked up by LJA as the city engineer. We don't know if there is another set that was actually finalized as a final set that was used for construction. We don't know that.
And so the question I go back to, in the one through eight, taking out number three, what is the plan or process? Are you going to give us those recommendations? Is it something that the engineer should have said, hey, Mr. Mayor, these things are issues and we need to address them with the developer? How do we rectify these issues, or is there anything to be rectified?
So, I don't want to skip ahead, but if you want to just go straight to the recommendations.
Okay, well, wait to go wrong.
You want to go straight to the recommendations, you're going to see where we talk about two or three different things that are process improvements that'll take care of it. For the gates at Prairie, we did have all the documents that we needed to review. We did not find any issues with the, with the roads or the access or the coves. Nor did we find any issues with the driveways in the two locations that you had a two-way drive. Things of potential concern, stormwater system does not have any mitigation measures to limit the outflow, so you have no control over the flow coming out of there. Numerous sanitary sewer connections were shown as undersized. Vertical and horizontal separation between sanitary sewer water and stormlines did not meet TCEQ requirements. There's a certain amount of space you're supposed to have between those two different kinds of pipes. They didn't appear to have met those.
So two questions. One, on, on the one, two, and three, I guess in the storm. I know the gates is not up yet, they're still preliminary.
That's correct.
Would that be a, since, who was the city engineer and who was the developers engineer?
The, the developers engineer is LJA, and we are the ones that reviewed those plans. Because it's an ongoing project and we are the ones that reviewed the plans on that project. And I, I would say that also, after we did our review, our review memo was sent by the city to LJA, and I had a subsequent conversation with LJA, and they said they would address the comments in our review. I haven't seen how they're going to address them, but they said they would be addressed.
And that's LJA representing the developer of the gates at Prairie?
That's correct.
So, a quick question then. So if LJ, so Trilogy, it was the engineer for the city on this project?
We are.
We are now, yes.
Who was, who, when they first, who got the civil findings, your company or another company? LJA.
LJA is developers engineer.
And they received the civil initially, and it wasn't until later that it came out that they were representing the same company who's representing both, while we found not to be illegal, definitely potential unethical, and it's been switched. And then the questions on, so in, I guess you give us recommendations in reference to the TCEQ lines for that one, but if we can go to the recommendations.
So we try to do these in bullet fashion. Again, this is where the interaction and the dialogue back and forth between us, council, the mayor, and legal council, will have a more complete package of recommendations. So these are the initial recommendations. And we talked about one of them was that the city develop a schematic document controls procedure developing process. We talked about that. If you guys want to adopt something like that, there are several of them out there that are pretty standard that help kind of take care of some of these issues we want. It is recommended, any track of land that is replanted or proposed for new development requires a review of water, wastewater capacity availability, stormwater mitigation, traffic access. These are all the things that we've been running across in terms of issues right here. And just to be honest, this one is a very important one because as development continues and you're not improving or increasing your capacity for water, your capacity for wastewater, your ability to deal with drainage, at some point, you're going to get to the point to where development is not going to be, is not going to be in your best interest. You're going to have to keep the infrastructure up with the growth. We're not doing that in this particular. It is recommended that the responsibilities, the review, the inspection of property, development needs to be clearly defined. This is what we talked about earlier. I think the mayor has already hosted one meeting on this, where he pulled all three of the US Water, Bureau Veritas and us together to talk about, where are we overlapping, where are there gaps? Let's figure out how to close the gap, let's get rid of the overlap, and let's make this a seamless process. So what we started trying to do, we were not asked to do this, but it makes sense. We started whiteboarding out. Day one, a developer walks into your office and say, I want to develop something. We just did a timeline going all the way across, all the things that need to happen. And we're trying to make sure everybody is responsible for something, by which there are no gaps and there are no overlaps, that takes you from the person knocking on your door to the person putting the key in their apartment to get in. So that's what we're working on right now. That needs to be done. We can't do that in a vacuum, it's going to take all three of us sitting down, as well as the fire marshal and the fire chief, who handles a whole separate part of it and neither, neither of the three of us even do it. That's a recommendation that we complete that process. To better understand the responsibility, the responsible, the responsible party for certain permits, contracts between the city and Bureau Veritas, and between the city and US Water should be reviewed. That's a follow-on to kind of clearing up the, once we understand what everybody's responsible for and, and what they're not responsible for, we make sure our contracts reflect that so that everybody's in the right place. Those are the initial recommendations. I hope that after you guys have a chance to look at it, and after legal and city secretary, everybody has a chance to look at it, we get more recommendations, and we run that through the technical end of this thing, and we'll be glad to include that in our reports, so we'll have a full and thorough report at the end of the day.
Counselor? My question, in reference to the itemized recommendations for each of the three, as our city engineer, how would that be passed on and moved? Is that, is that something that we would, need to be, a memo needs to be done? Like, so the bullet points for all the developments? How, how are we going to rectify those issues?
So we have these findings, and I think we probably need to have some conversation with legal about what do we do about these findings? That, that would be my recommendation.
So any, so none, so none of these are required? So, so nothing of, as in public safety or the health of the people who were over there? This is just things that we, you're just recommending that we do?
Well, I don't want to brush it off that lightly. I mean, what I'm saying is that we have findings, and you know, how the city wants to move forward in terms of how they address these findings, I don't, I don't think we as the engineer can make that decision. I think there is a legal component to it, and there's certainly a component that bears forth on the citizens that are living in these projects.
We just want to make sure that when we're, we're saying that, we are hearing your recommendations, we're talking about, we want to put all the recommendations into a larger development, so we have a process, but we're also wanting to make sure that our city engineer, which is your company, is saying that the bullet items that you, you made for any of the development, nothing is of, of the essence that needs to be addressed, or we, or of none of our, that we don't, that we can just get to when we get to it. Is that what I'm hearing?
No, no, well, one of the recommend, one of the pass forwards can be, in order to make this a complete report, is for every finding, there is an action put below it as to what we're going to do about it. That can be part of what comes out of these discussions that we have, to make this a full and complete report.
Counselor?
I would just say you're going to put together the step-by-step process of what needs to be done. My question to you is, what kind of step-by-step process would we need for those properties that are considered in the city of Prairie, or county property?
You know, one of the things we did was we reviewed some of the ordinances that the county has compared to some of the ordinances you guys have. The second you leave your city limits, it's, it's a different set of rules. So, we didn't review the rules for Warren County, but we can certainly talk about the ones within your purview.
Now, what's, in some of your findings, you reference directly and indirectly the ordinances, either being outdated or not addressing. So I would like to see you incorporate that in your, your recommendations, because that's something we've been doing in so many areas, where we've been running into current and prior city attorneys, who've been pointing out that's outdated, the law has passed, you know, there's so many things that, so if you could incorporate those on the things you know we have ordinance on, or if we don't have ordinance and need one, we can easily add that, so that we are tightening up as we go forward, because I've got international building codes and so many things are evolving, or again, if we've got a gap because ours are as old as they are.
Right.
Well, what, what's fortunate here is that Prairie and the first city in this state to grow as fast as it's grown, you know, these are growing pains, but we don't have to reinvent the wheel here. There are precedences for what you're going through, and how these other cities went from a smaller-sized city to a larger-sized city. And we've been looking at some of those, but I think, I don't know, we looked at four or five other cities to see how did they get from where they once were to where they are today, and all the changes they had to go through. A purview is going to go through some changes.
Sure, sure, but our ordinance component, I think, would address, because then, like right now, if it should be an eight inch and it's a six, and we either don't show, it should be an eight in such and such a situation with the capacity, the flow, things like that, then, you know, we can't hold developers to it, and we want to make sure we at least have the appropriate capacity as, as they are built. You know, we certainly appreciate all the work and information you guys are doing, helping us.
And one of the other things we're doing, we're working with the economic development folks, on a sort of a three-phase process to sort of help to keep development going while at the same time improving the environment by which development is happening. You don't want to stop it, but you got to, you got to improve.
So we want to make sure you're on their next agenda. Counselor?
Yeah, we have a proposal here.
And this clarification, ordinance that you put in the back, literally just an ordinance that you abide by, but not the one that you're recommending, that needs to be changed because they're outdated, correct?
That's correct. Those are the ones that were our guiding, like, those are the ones that are in place today.
And with that, I think we select USW Bureau Veritas.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello again. I don't have a fancy handout, but I know my husband printed all these building inspection reports, and I think the thirty-day period can start from October 1st to October the 30th. And as the engineers say, the gate still has not broke ground yet. I understand the engineering on the civil side of things got a little bit held up. I know the plan review is approved, and we're just waiting on the civil side of things for them to be able to issue the permit and break ground. I know the developer has also been informed that none of their contractors have registered, or they don't have the proper information that they need on the permit. When at that time it gets ready, the civil passes, we're going to move forward, they'll still have that issue if they don't address that now. And I know an email went out again today about that. Now, Panther Hills has been on hold since last inspection done out there was about ten fifteen, about the middle of October. Due to the fire contractor, the developer fired the fire contractor and hired another one, thinking that they were going to go in, in the last buildings, or the ones that they're looking at is four, six, seven, and eight, thinking that they were just going to go in and replace some painted sprinkler heads, and that would pass. That's not the case in the state of Texas. You have to follow the state fire marshal's rules and regulations. The contractor had to resubmit, like he was taking responsibility for the entire project. And that, that's been a hiccup, that's been a holdup right now. So they have not, all their building finals were canceled back in mid-October, pending the fire plan review being completed. The mayor gave me information today that the fire plan review, actually, I think, on November the 11th, had finally passed the plan review portion of it. So we should be seeing the finals on those four buildings getting scheduled at some point in time when the, they actually get all the fire finalized in there. Campus Edge, Campus Edge is going a lot smoother than Panther Hills. I know when the contractors got in and started on Panther Hills, they were just flowing and going, and we had a pre-construction meeting, I know I'm going past my thirty days, but we had a pre-construction meeting before Campus Edge started on this one, and went over all the rules and regulations with them, and they seem to be following it a lot better on Campus Edge. They've had a couple of buildings, say, six and seven out at Campus Edge. Their MEPs on the initial one, one of them, there was no access out there. So no access, naturally, the MEPs failed, we can't access the job site. I don't know what, Chris did the inspections out there, so I don't know what was the no-access point, whether it be they were under mud and water, or whether they just had debris around, and he just couldn't access the site. But that issue was addressed within a day or two, and both six and seven were the last inspections out there. Both of them passed their MEPs. That's mechanical, electrical, and plumbing. Now, the pool, I have been out on the pools two or three times. Chris went out one time, and I've been out the last two times. The pool has not passed for their electrical underground, because the contractor was just laying the pipes on top of the ground. And where he had them, where they weren't exposed, they were, they had already buried them, so they couldn't uncover them. But address that issue with them, they know what they're supposed to be doing, but they have not put that back on the schedule since the last inspection out there, October the 24th. And it may be because of the rain and everything else. Now, that's those three. Was there any other questions?
Yes, no. Well, I'm sorry, my question is to, so, see our first report, we'll say, Richard Road.
What's the date?
Twelve seventeen, two thousand eighteen. Project description, certificate of occupancy, building one.
That's...
You're looking at the zip file that was sent to us on each building for Panther Hill. And so kind of what we talked through and went through when we had our meeting, this is what was sent to us. So, so there's two things. You're, you're giving your report, your third report on inspections, I think that's what you just did. And then we had Bureau Veritas on the agenda for something we've been trying to have a conversation with Bureau Veritas for the last eighteen months, and that's in reference to your, the inspections. And so right now, we're going through, our questions have to do with inspections on each of the building in Panther Hill, the gates for Campus Edge, and they may not be there. So we're, he's asking in reference to Panther Hill. We have the zip file that was sent to us by the attorney on each of the buildings, so like they made a copy for us, I don't know if they did for you.
No, I haven't seen that.
So what you had on your iPad, like, like here, it says, these passed.
Hold on, hold on, we can't have multiple conversations, it's open meeting, counsel. You have to, have one person talk at a time, go ahead.
So this is just a copy of each of the buildings, whether it be, we have the inspection report, and then we have if it's a temporary CO, or if it's a CO, because we had questions for you, Bureau Veritas specifically, on each of those things, and so I think council was relating to one of the, one specific building, so you would have to give her the building number. She could look it up on her thing and then go through it, or if there's a copy for her, there's one up there in the front.
What agenda item is that?
This is twelve. This is what I emailed you about.
So this is outside the thirty-day written reports that you all asked about?
This is on page twelve, agenda item number twelve. Bureau Veritas is on there in reference to the reports. The same information that was emailed to you in reference to a zip file for Bureau Veritas was something that you received, and so we're just simply going to go through something we've been trying to have this conversation with Bureau Veritas in reference to how they inspect. And then she was also, if, if council had questions, when I sat with Ms. Rogers, there's a, Bureau Veritas does two different functions for us. The report she just gave to us was the inspection, what was the building official, if I'm correct?
Does inspection, inspection as, as an inspector outside?
So she does the site inspections for our development. And then we also have hired Bureau Veritas as our building official, who currently now inspects the property after a property may be opened or to whatever that effect.
What was that, she's not following you?
When, when it's occupied, we do not enter the building.
No, not, not for inspections, but as a building official. So if we, if we, so as our building official, if we're saying we want you to inspect the property, if you're inspecting for grease traps or any, you don't do any of that?
Now, you're talking two separate situations. Are you talking about an occupied apartment, or are you talking about a commercial grease trap?
I, I am talking about the function that city council renewed Bureau Veritas contract for sixty days to do what?
To act as the building official, to go out in the office with the plans, to go over the permitting process, to train the ladies in the TMS system. When plans come in, we'll take a look at them and see if the plans are all in compliance with everything that needs to be submitted for plan review, just various other items within the office, or if there's some sort of, something that I need to look at in the city, like they had a zoning violation that they wanted me to go out and look at. And that's also, we act as your zoning official whenever we're in this capacity.
So you, that means you, you would, you would go on the premises in that capacity?
I would drive by and take a look at it in that capacity.
So that's what I'm talking about, but the, the, talking to us about the differences, and we're, we're talking about the inspection reports that Bureau Veritas gave each of the buildings for Panther Hill.
Okay, I don't have that, I don't have that zip file.
I think she just gave you a copy, but that's also what you have. The, the same...
I mean, this is stuff that we've all been in the past, but like, it's on the agenda item.
Hold, hold on, hold on, one at a time, go ahead, counsel.
And on the agenda item, the agenda item, let me read it to you. It says, discuss thirty-day written report from Trilogy, Building Inspector Bureau Veritas, and USW, review documents for compliance on Panther Hill, the gates, and Campus Edge. This is the same conversation that I had with you one-on-one, and we're not asking for anything different. I'm simp, we're simply got a copy of everything you have on your iPad. So if you're going to go to building ten and click in your iPad, it's the same thing we have here. And we're simply asking you to go over, like if, if council had a question on, um, building one. Building one had some, so building one had some issues, right? So building one in the inspection, there was, it says plumbing rough failed, foundation engineering letter, framing failed, da-da-da-da, that's what we all have.
Right.
And so we, so council has questions on what that means. So council, go ahead and ask your report.
Yeah, so my question was, so the reason why we asked for you to come on and be our building official is so that we could go over the reports in which we received and just get updated, be brought up to date. So I see plumbing rough failed, foundation letter, framing failed, pending engineer's letter. You have some passed, then completed, and then it says, pass partial.
What's the date?
The date is, uh, this, this document was received on eight twenty, two thousand eighteen, but it was signed by you, Mr. Mayor, on twelve seventeen, two thousand eighteen.
Do you have the most recent documents, because all this, a lot of things?
I, I just want to, so, so my question is, is it, how, what is the process? So we talked earlier about what, you, you said after everyone does their job, then you go back and give the certificate of occupancy. And so, how do you, how, 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 what is our process in issuing our certificate of occupancy when it says plumbing roof failed, or when it has just different applications on here that says failed? Like, what, what is our process to go about that? How do we go about that?
Well, first off, I'd need to see where the most recent documents are, because this is several. For example, electrical final, you leave this all passed.
I said several things passed.
Mechanical, well, let's read them into the record like you read the ones that didn't, so we can be clear. Need an engineering letter on the foundation. Is that in the construction industry? Is that an uncommon request?
No, it's not uncommon.
Okay, so on the framing failed, we would have to see, and, oh, I'm sorry, it says pending engineer's letter.
Right, and that's the language in that engineer's letter that's not correct.
So it's the engineer's language, not a bad building per se?
It's the engineer's language in that letter.
Okay, electric final passed, mechanical final passed, plumbing final passed partial. Need access to water heaters in, in your, just as you stand here, and I know it's a lot of buildings and you do a lot of cities and things like that, but is that something that need access to water heaters? Is that something that you run into that they can't do, that it takes some major work?
Which is something that they hadn't done at the time, and they were supposed to deck out an access path, because it's got to be minimum of twenty-four inches wide with a continuous path to the water heater, and they didn't have it decked at the time.
At the time, okay. Customer service inspection letter completed.
It's completed if, because it was not inspected by Bureau Veritas out at Panther Hills. They didn't have any of the water lines or the sewer lines inspected.
Who, who, who inspected it, if it's completed?
Nobody, that I'm aware of. The developer.
So, why is it marked completed?
Because that is the instruction that I got whenever I sat down and talked to, had a discussion with the mayor. The water line, the sewer lines are already installed, we're at the end of the project. You know, are they going to make them rip them up or not? That's, that's an option that we offer our cities to go by. Whether they're going to make the developer go out and back out there and rip everything up, or we just mark it completed, not inspected by Bureau Veritas.
So, you marking it completed, and then you put it not inspected by Bureau Veritas. So you're saying that for this customer service inspection, that was not done, that would have been done by who? For the city?
It should have been done by us.
Right, okay, so that wasn't, it should have been done by you, it wasn't done. What do we need to do, or what, what does this entail? Like, what, what is this inspection letter, customer service inspection letter, what does that entail?
It's a requirement by TCEQ for customer service inspection on water lines, where they make sure there's no... It's a requirement by TCEQ for customer service inspection on water lines, uh, where they make sure there's no, uh, solder, that you have lead-free solder or the line comes in, whether it's PEX or PVC, it's a CSI report.
Okay. So, for, for clarity, it wasn't inspected by y'all even though y'all were supposed to be the ones to do that particular inspection? And, but you were instructed to put down completed by the mayor?
We were instructed to put completed by the city, correct.
And is this something in the construction industry that has never happened before?
No.
Thank you. Audience, I would just ask you to really hold on because we don't wanna have to, as it's a public meeting and I know there's a lot of excited information and that's fine, but until you find out that this is unusual, it's not the big deal that it may sound like, because as Ms. Rogers stated, this is a construction industry, it happens in, in buildings, it happens with the buildings on campus. And I'll remind you that you're in a city hall that is leaky and, and we're trying to do our mold remediation right in this building. So, while we're talking about other buildings, the one that we're in every day has its own issues. Counselor Jones, I think, is first.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I just wanna, uh, want to continue to go through the documents. And just because that something was done once before or is not unusual, doesn't make it right nor wrong.
Amen.
I agree.
Are you, you gotta answer.
So, also, it says under, it says energy final completed, but not inspected by Bureau Veritas. Is that the same case where, um, y'all were supposed to inspect it, um, but y'all didn't inspect?
On the energy final, we, we, we would receive an energy report from the contractor. Uh, and that energy report was not received.
So, why was it put completed?
Because we did not, we did not receive that report to inspect the report.
So, is that a report that requires report?
It's a report that typically, residential more than commercial. It's typically more residential than commercial. Uh, sometimes we see it on commercial, but it's one hundred percent on residential, it's not one hundred percent on commercial.
So, so, is it proper protocol, uh, to put complete on these documents if it hasn't been done?
It's proper protocol to take direction from the city that we're working for.
All right, so, so, you're saying that the mayor directed Bureau Veritas to put complete on these items?
Now, that is an option that I gave them, or that is an option that I gave the city, is what we can do. We can mark it, uh, completed, not inspected by Bureau Veritas, that takes any liability off of Bureau Veritas, so it takes liability off of the city.
Takes it off?
Takes it off of the city.
Okay.
Yeah, no, that, because it's marked completed, not inspected by Bureau Veritas, Bureau Veritas, we are here acting on behalf of the city. It takes liability off the city.
Can you, can you, uh, on the same item, and I don't know if Counselor has any more question? The re- what I wanted you to do is walk us through what is a, a failed me- so, when it says plumbing rough failed, framing failed, walk us through what that process is, and then there's a pass partial on the plumbing. Walk us through that process and, and what we did to rectify it, or kind of, and then it has on here pending.